Get loud, or get big crowds quieted as I have what I call the band director's whistle. It's very loud, it penetrates and would hurt your ears, so it's best if I just clap my hands this evening. Hey, listen folks, I'm really, I'm delighted to have such a large turnout here this evening. We, of course, had no idea what to expect, but this is about as full as we can get and not have everyone just be...
Louder.
Okay, by the way, this microphone is not live and doesn't project, they're simply recording, so staff, we're gonna have to try and project a little bit louder, which I'm always glad to do. Anyway, it's just terrific to have so many of you here this evening. As you know, backing up to when I did the State of the City speech in March, was it March? Yes, it was March, I talked about the fact that we wanted to do some outreach into the neighborhoods, and this, as you know, is the first effort at doing that. We're delighted to be here. I'm not sure where the next one would be, but we're going to move this around town. I'm right now favoring maybe the next one be tying in the Ballenger area along with Highway 99. As you know, sometimes those folks feel a little disenfranchised, and so I think that might be where we are headed next. I wanted to introduce several people here this evening, and the first one I'd like to introduce is my executive assistant, Carolyn Paffay, who is right over here. If you ever need to get a hold of my office, you'll talk to her, so always be nice to her, because she has full control of my schedule, as I find out literally every day. She points me in the right direction and hands me whatever I need to have in my hands to make it work. But the other folks that are here that I would like to introduce are Shane Hope, who is our new, oh, here, Development Services Director. This is Shane here. She's been on board for about a month and doing a fabulous job. Also here tonight is Phil Williams, he's a Public Works guy and one that will come and solve all of your infrastructure problems, sometimes. We also have Al Compan, who is our Chief of Police. We have Carrie Height, who is the parts and rec person, and we have Scott James, who is our new Finance Director. So, those are the players that are here. I think as I tried to get out the format that we'd like to use this evening, is to, I'll make a few kind of introductory comments about big picture, what's going on in the city, just probably take 45 minutes or so. Seven or eight, seven or eight minutes or so, and then we'll turn it over sequentially to our directors, who can kind of give you a pitch on what each of their departments is working on, some of the big projects that they're undertaking, and then after that, the intent is just to open it up for questions and answers, as well as conversation that we need to have. We have this scheduled for two hours, and this is not a rotary meeting where you have to stay until the end, so if we get done early, that's okay too. I do want to thank Bill Lund, Bill, for the good work that he's done here, and we really appreciate the fact that Bill is willing to open the doors this evening and have his establishment open, and the coffee is on the house from him, so let's give him a round of applause. You notice that we have some microphones laying around and a camera over here. My Edmonds News is taking on kind of a brave new venture, and they're not only instituting the very successful webpage that they have, that many of you probably use to figure out what's going on in town, but in addition to that, they're starting a new TV site, where they will at certain occasions be out and record a meeting, will have special projects, not just the city, but anyone. If you want to go on My Edmonds News now, you can see three or four of the clips that they've done, everything from mixing a drink at Opulo to interviewing one of our sergeants with the police force. So, it'd be a variety of uses, but I think it will be a great new addition for us to communicate across the community, and I really compliment Teresa Whipple for undertaking that project. They are recording tonight, so you have to be nice to me all the time, or we'll just cut it out. No, we won't, we won't. I just want to make a few comments generally speaking, and then we'll get into the directors. You know, and I said some of this in the State of the City speech, but it's good to recap, as you all know, in one way or another, we were in a terrific financial mess nationally, starting in about 2008, when the economy basically tanked with some of the problems that were going on. My first year in office, we had some real financial problems to address, and we took the time to do that and made some pretty darn painful cuts, so that we could deliver basic services, but unfortunately, that took away a lot of what we would like to be doing. With the cuts that we made, and I know some of you have business backgrounds, first of all, we did across the board a 4% cut from every budget, every department in town, and that's a, that's a big number for many of the departments. If you've ever had to make cuts before, you get past 1%, and staff starts to worry quite a bit. We also found ways creatively, but painfully, we lost 12 staff members during that period of time. Again, a budget reduction necessity, but we lost 12 people, and if you don't know, Edmonds, City of Edmonds with 40,000 people already has one of the lowest per capita employees to population in the Puget Sound, and so losing those 12 people was a big loss, helped cut the budget, but nonetheless was a big loss. And the last thing that we did that made a fairly substantial change was that we renegotiated all of our health insurance that the staff has, and that saved us about $300,000. So with all of those cuts, we made substantial cuts, but because we did that, along with a couple of other things, like the economy has begun to turn a bit, our sales tax numbers are going up, as you probably well know, the property values are beginning to stabilize, and in some cases even beginning to go up, and the implication there, of course, is it helps us generate more income from property taxes, which are necessity of ours. And then the last couple of things related to that, for the City of Edmonds, which as you know is pretty well built out now, we have several large construction projects going on, and that entails the fact that we would generate money from the permit process and the building process. We have some very large projects, as you know, most of you know about now, the Swedish Edmonds Hospital improvements. They are about to cut the ribbon on their multi-story parking garage. They also have a $72,000 expansion plan, which will be of great help and benefit to the citizens here in Edmonds as they expand the kinds of medical services that they can produce. We also have the Jacobson Marine, if you've been down on the waterfront, there's a new construction down there. Jacobson Marine is a very large organization and very high reputation boat broker and repair business. Used to be in Ballard for a number of years, moved to West Seattle just for a couple of years, and now the port has renegotiated the package there, but that's another large project. If you don't know, the post office, not this one, but the post office in downtown, that property has been sold. The first improvement you'll see, and it'll be done in stages, is the, on the, on the north end of the property, there's a developer who has plans in front of the city now to build a multifamily unit. I think about 40 units that they're planning on building. Of course, that will, and yes, it's all under the height limit, don't worry about that, but nonetheless, it's a great project for us, will create a little more density downtown. The last thing I wanted to mention is, in the news recently, you maybe noticed that the Salish Crossing property, also known as the Antique Mall, and for you long timers, also known as the Old Safeway Site, down near the waterfront, is going to be going under a major renovation. The folks that own that property have already improved a lot of the, a lot of the parking, they put in new shrubberies. The old Safeway building will be divided into four different pieces, and the main one that I'm just really excited about is part of the development will be an art museum. One of the principals in that, in the, in the purchase of that property, has been collecting Northwest art for a very long time, and I'm sure that'll be part of the display, but then they'll also be bringing in shows, I'm sure, for people to see. This is a large project with large intentions. They're doing outreach into Seattle and Bellevue to try and build the support for this, but it'll be a great expansion for the city. They'll be doing three other types of businesses in that particular building also. There'll be a central atrium that will have a fire pit with places to sit, relax. I won't tell you what the other businesses are, and you'll just have to stay tuned on that one. Nonetheless, it's very important for us. So with all of these changes, we're able to, and I use the word cautiously, cautiously be more optimistic with our budgets, and so this year, we've been much more aggressive, and based on the early numbers I hear from Scott, we're gonna be in pretty good shape the remainder of this year, and perhaps be able to even expand some of the work we need to do into next year. I want to talk just a little bit about some of the major undertakings that we'll be doing, but not a lot of details, because we'll have staff talk about that. One of the things some of you have maybe followed over the last two and a half years, we had a citywide effort to develop a strategic plan that would be helpful in trying to develop the needs of the City of Edmonds. We went through extensive process, we had literally a couple of thousand people involved in one way or another in the process, they came up with a list of 86 issues that needed attention, and we actually started that last year, and we're trying to go through and have different departments in the city, the Chamber of Commerce, other organizations in town that might be able to pick up the ball on some of these strategic elements and have, have ourselves get to work. To that end, we've hired a part-time consultant to come in and kind of organize and keep all of those points on track. She's been around now for about a month, I think, and she's already just grabbed hold of it and started moving the projects in the, in the 86 points forward. I, I know, well, one of the main things I'm terribly proud of is that we are actually, for the first time in five years, beginning a street overlay, street repair program that's pretty expansive. We were able to dig out $1.2 million out of the projected income we would have this year to do street improvements, and I know that Bill will probably talk about some of the street needs and what we're doing to address it. Just to point out the magnitude of the problem that we face, if you haven't done any repairs, extensive, you know, street overlays and that sort of thing, a bad road doesn't get better in that five year period. I know, I live in this neighborhood, and one of the roads that I drive and you drive and probably are grumpy about is North Benno Dale Beach Road, going from 76 up over to Olympic View Drive. It's a god-awful mess, but guess what? If we did just a two-inch overlay, and had, we'd have to grind it down because of all of the breakups and whatever, it would cost somewhere in the vicinity of $1.1 million just to do that street with a two-inch overlay. Probably 1.5 if we did a four-inch overlay. And then when I'm so proud of having $1.2 million to do some road repair work this year, you can see the size of the problem we must have, because all of you have the one street in town that you know is the absolute worst street in town. As a matter of fact, I wouldn't say where, but someone called and Phil and I went and looked at the sidewalk that was broken up tonight. So, I mean, there's all of these issues that simply have to be dealt with, and it's gonna be a slow process. I don't want it, before we have to get down to asking for some sort of a street levy, you know, for a number of years, so this next year, we're gonna try to find another fairly good-sized chunk of money to continue the street overlay program, but realistically, at some point, we're gonna have to get creative to really again solve the problem. So, I think that kind of wraps up what I want to say. I'd like to ask which of my staff would like to volunteer first? Al?
I'll be happy to volunteer, Mayor.
Oh, good, he's always open like that. Anyway, thanks a lot, we'll get back.
Thank you, good evening. I'm Al Compan, the Chief of Police, and I gotta say, this turnout exceeded certainly my expectations, and I thank you for taking some time out on a Thursday night to come and be with us. It means a lot, because that's part of our community, and certainly the police department's very much a part of this community. I'm gonna be available later on in the program, as will all the directors and the mayor, to answer questions, to do kind of a Q and A, but meantime, I wanted to give you a little rundown of what your $8.8 million, the mayor was just talking about finding 1. something for street overlays. The police department is the largest department in the general fund, and our budget this year is $8.8 million. So, what does $8.8 million buy us as a community? Buys me, my two assistant chiefs, we have 35 patrol officers, we have seven detectives, one professional standard sergeant, one training corporal, one administrative sergeant, and five traffic officers. I have one executive assistant, we have five clerks, one property officer, evidence technician, one or two animal control officers, one part-time administrative assistant, and one part-time domestic violence coordinator. That's not a lot of staff for a city of 40,000 compared to other cities similar size in the Puget Sound area. Last year, some of our major accomplishments, we were re-accredited, sort of like accreditation at a college or a university. We come in ourselves, prepare our, our agency for outside inspectors to come in and take a look at our practices, our procedures, our policies, and we're very proud of the fact that we received re-accreditation. We've been accredited for a number of years, there's only 51 out of 285 law enforcement agencies in the state that actually are accredited, and we have to show that we subscribe to and adhere to over 140 standards, dealing with anything having to do with handling of citizen complaints, investigation of crimes, traffic investigations, dealing with evidence and property, public disclosure, all these different things are, are looked at as part of the accreditation process. Another very important piece of accreditation is our policy manual. If you go to our website, on the City of Edmonds website, and there's a, there's a police department homepage there, we have our policy and procedure manual publicly posted, so if anybody has any questions about why we might have done something the way we did it, a lot of times the answer can be found in our policy and procedure manual. Last year, we had two officers complete their field training process, brand-new officers, and we had two police officers hired to fill additional vacancies. As part of the budget this year, we were able to re-establish two additional positions that were cut in previous years, and I've got two officers right now in police academy, and we're in the process of actually filling three additional positions. One's been open for some time, and then I have two other openings due to resignations. So, nothing ever happens in Edmonds, right? Just to give you some idea, last year, in little old Edmonds, we had a total of 18 robberies, 197 assaults, 230 burglaries, 706 thefts, 55 motor vehicle thefts. We solved a lot of those. A high of almost 95% on our assaults. Assaults are relatively easy crime to solve in, in our business, because a lot of times the suspect is known to the victim. We solved about 24% of our motor vehicle thefts, and about 15% of our burglaries, those are the breaking and entering, the house burglaries, business burglaries. In addition, a lot of folks want to know, how many traffic citations, how many DUIs, what's going on in that area? We had almost 22,000 dispatch calls in 2013, we investigated 710 traffic collisions, we wrote 5,300 traffic citations, plus another 132 for DUIs, we arrested 1,400 adults, we arrested 125 juveniles, and we issued 530 criminal citations. So, nothing ever goes on in Edmonds, right? So, that's a fair amount of activity for a relatively lean police force, and we're very proud of what we do. One of the things that I feel very strongly about, and I've worked here now for almost 36 years, my hair was nice and brown when I started, kinda like Alex is right here, not quite as long, Alex, but that's okay. But I constantly try to instill in our members, in my guys and gals, to have a pretty good understanding of what's involved with earning the public's trust. We don't take that as, as a given, it's not something that's just automatically bestowed upon us or granted to us, we have to earn it. And I can tell you that the number of compliments that we get, they're very heartwarming, first of all, and secondly, the number of compliments far exceed the number of complaints that come into our office, and we appreciate that. We like to hear the good things, but if we stub our toe, and we do, once in a while, we also like to hear that. It's not necessarily the pleasant call that I like to receive, but we try and learn from our mistakes, and it's, this business, as I'm sure you realize from reading in the press and TV news, our officers are out there 24/7, oftentimes making split-second decisions that are then reviewed, and reviewed, and litigated, and litigated, sometimes for years afterwards. And I am very, very proud of the members of our police department, and I do believe our community, based upon the feedback that I get, is also proud of what we do. Is it a perfect business? No, but we're the front line out there, it's my honor to be the chief and serve this community, and I'm not gonna talk anymore right now, but as I say, I'll be happy to address any particular issues that you might have. One of the initiatives for next year that I'm going to be asking for on our budget is to get our street crime unit up and running. That was cut during the budget cuts, I had a sergeant, two officers in there, they were plainclothes patrol, dealing with a lot of the real irritants, vehicle prowls, vandalism, prostitution, street drugs, you know, things that are illegal, but that really impact the quality of life in our community. The whole broken window syndrome, where, you know, if you keep the community looking nice, and you don't have a bunch of broken windows around, that instills trust and confidence in the community, and the chances of crime tend to go down when you maintain things that are that way. And our street crimes officers were a real front line in that, we lost that, so I'm gonna try and get that back. The other thing I would really like to, and I am gonna stop now, that I would really like, promises, I would really like to see, is to get our school resource program going. We lost our two school resource officers as part of the budget cuts, I'd like to at least get one officer back in Edmonds Woodway High School. That was a wonderful resource for the school, wonderful resource for the department, we had a 50/50 cost sharing with the school district, and if any of you have an open line with any of the school board members, I would love it if you would contact them and say, hey, we as a community would love to see funding of school resource officers again in the schools. So I am gonna stop now, I'll be available later for questions and answers, so thank you for your attendance.
I just want to remind the directors that I've asked you to speak for five or six minutes.
That was no more than five, Mayor.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Anyway, the next person to volunteer is Carrie Height, our parts and recreation person.
That's me, thanks.
That's you.
I'd love to volunteer. Good evening, everyone, as Al said, it's awesome to see everybody here, this is a great turnout, and it's something that we rely on to help the mayor on the city, is good public input and feedback, and we like to hear from you, we like to know what you want in your community, it's hard to work in a void of that, and I have not found any, any quietness in Edmonds. I've always had some good feedback, it's a good direction, and it makes my job a lot easier, so again, thanks for coming out tonight. The Parks Department has a little over $3 million in our budget, we also bring in revenue through classes and fees and rentals, we operate that arm as well. We have 20 FTEs, and, and we lost a couple FTEs during the budget process and the budget cuts, but we're, we're doing good, we're a pretty lean department, comparatively to the rest of our departments, or the rest of the cities in this area. We operate and have 24 parks, and we maintain 50 different sites, about 450 acres of land that we maintain and manage. We also have the Francis Anderson Center, the Yost Pool, we operate the cemetery, we're a liaison with the library, I saw Leslie Caplin come in, welcome Leslie, our librarian for the city, she actually, Snow, it's a partnership with Snow Island. We also have many community partnerships with community agencies that operate out of the Francis Anderson Center. So, pretty big operation. I wanted to focus tonight on things that are on our project list, and things that will impact you and the community. One is that, and I see several people here tonight that were on our committee to complete the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, and I wanted to thank those people that are here tonight, and also let you know that we just adopted that plan in February, it's our guide for parks for the next six years, and as the mayor talked about, the strategic plan, that actually was considered in the PROS plan. What the PROS plan does is it drills down a little bit farther for us to be able to start to prioritize some of the projects that this community would like to see in their parks. One of our big projects that we're in the middle of is the renovation of City Park, it's our oldest park, it's our largest park right downtown Edmonds, and we have it completely demoed, the play structure, and there's a big fence around it, if any of you've been down there, our park crew's been demoing everything. We're gonna be installing, we're gonna be doing a community build project, and we have 80 people signed up already to show up next Friday and Saturday to roll up their sleeves and help us build the playground. So, we're gonna be building the playground at City Park, and then later in the fall, we'll be installing the components for a spray pad in City Park, which will be open next year. So, we're pretty excited about that project. This year is the year for grants for the State of Washington for parks projects, and we have five grants that are submitted, and I wanted to touch on those, because those are projects in the future for us. One is, and, one is not, hopefully not a surprise to any of you, but we are looking at acquiring civic stadium right downtown Edmonds. The school district owns it, we operate it, we lease it for a dollar a year, we have the benefit, and it's an incredible asset in our community, and the school district has recently said that they would like to sell it. They actually did receive a purchase and sale agreement for it. We're, we're right in the middle of appraisal, we've put a grant in to help us purchase that property, we have every intent to negotiate with the school district to try to purchase that property at the end of this year or early next year. So, we're working on that ambitiously, we have our sleeves rolled up, we do not, do not want to lose that as an asset for Edmonds. It's incredible, if you go down on any given sunny evening, there's at least 100, 150 people recreating in that park, whether they're playing soccer, running the track, playing patong, playing tennis or basketball, it's packed. So, that's one of our big projects, and one of the grants we have in. Another project that's coming up, and three grants we put in for this project, is the rehab of our fishing pier. Our fishing pier is 30 years old, and the whole underside needs some renovation, and it's a very difficult project to fund, it's a $1.5 million project. We have three grants in, and we also have a commitment from Fish and Wildlife for some monies to be able to rehab that project. We've done great in the preliminary rounds of assessment of those grants, and we'll hear more by September. The fifth grant we have in is in your neighborhood, and it's a collaboration The fifth grant we have in is in your neighborhood and it's a collaboration with the city of Linwood. And it is to upgrade the Meadowdale Play Fields. Right now, there's softball fields and there's dirt soccer fields. And we put in a grant to be able to purchase turf fields. And the school district actually passed their bond this year. They had a million dollars allocated for Meadowdale Play Fields. We have money in our CIP, Linwood has money in their CIP, and we're going after a grant. So, it's a big puzzle of finances that we're trying to put together to be able to upgrade that field. So, those are the five grants, five projects. We're working pretty ambitiously also on Edmonds Marsh downtown. We, the marsh does not act as a marsh anymore. You'll notice when it rains and there's high tides, there's lots of flooding down there. It doesn't absorb the water, doesn't absorb the tide water or the creeks that come down into it as well as it should. It's not a good salmon habitat rearing ground. We're trying to create that back for the marsh. So, we are, we've actually received two grants over the past two years and we're getting to thirty percent design of that process. We also are looking at daylighting Willow Creek that runs through the marsh and that outfall would be on Marina Beach. So, to that extent, we will be remaster planning Marina Beach this summer. Actually, we'll probably start in August and September to remaster plan that. Not to develop it, but to look at where the outfall of Willow Creek would be and how that changes the look and feel of Marina Beach. So, we can accommodate both the environmental and the recreational concerns at Marina Beach. We are really working hard also on the former Woodway High School. There are fields up there that are unusable. And we just completed putting a four-point-two-million-dollar package together, of which Edmonds only has five-hundred-thousand dollars on the table. And that will be, after we complete all phases, will be four complete soccer fields that are turf with a walking track. There's basketball that's up there and tennis. But it's really designed to be a mini campus, a mini health and wellness center. The Verdi Health Commission was very supportive in this project. They allocated two-point-five-million dollars to the project. And we got some money from the state and the school district's putting in money. The school district right now is in design of that project and we're hoping to be in construction of that project next June after the school update gets out. So, it's a summer construction project opening September of 2013. Yost Pool. If any of you are Yost Pool swimmers, you will know that we've had some difficulty with Yost Pool this year. We've replaced the boiler and our heat exchanger went out and we have to delay the opening. So, I am happy to report, I was up there today and the water's at eighty-two degrees. And the water is pristine and gorgeous and the lifeguards are up there sorting and organizing and it will be open on Monday. So, please come and join us at Yost Pool. New this year at the pool is a partnership with the YMCA. Dale Turner YMCA is operating the pool for us this year. It's going to save us about fifteen thousand dollars for the summer season in operational costs. So, it's a pilot year for us. We have been assured that they provide excellent customer service and they have very high standards for their lifeguards. So, we are really hopeful that this is going to be a positive partnership for the summer and a continued after this year. We have a new program that started last year that will be on the ground this summer as well. We are partnering with the Student Conservation Association to bring kids into town, actually to employ kids in town in a youth employment program in our parks. And so, last year we had eight kids, this year we'll have ten kids. And the student conservation program funds most of it. And we also, they also received the Hazel Miller Foundation grant to support the environmental work that they're doing on the ground. So, we're pretty excited about that. We just cut the ribbon last week on a new plaza in town, the Veterans Plaza, located outside of the public safety building downtown. We're very excited about that. This town has not had a dedication or a plaza or a park dedicated to our veterans who have served overseas for us. And we wanted to be able to acknowledge that, appreciate them and value them. So, the ribbon was cut two weeks ago and we're pretty excited to start developing that. And last but not least, we have a new council member that is working with me on putting together a committee to look at, establishing a Parks Foundation in town. The Parks Foundation would be a way that we could continue to fund the high parks, the maintenance, the quality, the health and wellness programs that we provide and not be subject or impacted by any cuts that might come down the pipe. And so, it's a way for this community to say, yeah, we value our parks and to give back. So, we're working on that. Keep your eyes open. If you're interested, let me know and I'll certainly connect you to council member Azaros and myself and that community. And then I will also be around later for Q and A, but I just wanted to give you a broad brush stroke. And I think I was at five minutes and ten seconds.
Your five minutes and ten seconds were thirteen minutes. But who's keeping track? I'm going to go home and get my stopwatch. Anyway, the next person to volunteer is Shane Hope, who is our new Development Services Director. Have at it, Shane. I'm starting my, I'm starting.
Thank you. I appreciate knowing that. Shane Hope, Development Services Director, new to the city. So, being new, I probably have the shortest story to tell, but I will do my best. A few of you I have met and I appreciate that. And others, I am looking forward to getting to know you better. Me, new to the city, there are a lot of things yet I'm not familiar with, but priority. And I think this is an exciting place to be. Edmonds has so many good things going for it and you are part of it. People that are here are the most important. So, Development Services, you might wonder, what is that? Development Services encompasses things like building permits, development projects, all things that go with that. It encompasses some enforcement, that is, making sure that people are building appropriately or following the zoning regulations and things like that. And then the other part is long-range, thinking about plans for the future. How do we continue to make our community more walkable, friendly places? How do we accommodate the kinds of needs that are here? And you will hear and have been hearing about the departments and the responsibilities they have, which are so important for all of us. And at the same time, again, to try to help with those longer range and make sure that they're courting together. So, making it courting together, but it's unusual to bring up props. So, I have here, oh, thank you, Vanna. It's better looking though, isn't it? No, thank you.
Sure.
But just a, you know, reminder, this is where we are right now, up here in Perrinville. The area's owned for business, limited business. And you can see that the city of Linwood is right at the borders. So, sometimes it's a little confusing to people where Edmonds ends and Linwood starts, but you can see why when we're right at that corner. And so, there's one of the important things in this community is all the water that's here, the wonderful parks and things that we have. And then, of course, there's all the connections, the roadways and things like that, transit plans, all of those. So, thanks. That makes up one of the things that we're working on would be a comprehensive plan update. So, you may know that every city has a comprehensive plan, something that pulls all those pieces together and plans for the future. Not that we all have crystal balls and know exactly what's going to happen, but it's like your own life. You don't make some plans, things just happen to you. So, it's helpful to plan ahead and think about things. So, we will be undertaking a serious update to that comprehensive plan every few years. We have to do that under state law. So, our deadline this year is about one year from now, mid-2015, where we have to do a fairly significant update. Not necessarily changing a lot of policy, but updating all the information, demographic information, for example. I think it's probably changed. You might, you might have already figured that out. Say in 2000 was the last time that we had full data for this comprehensive plan. That was different than the information we got in 2010, the next census, or the other information that is evolving since then. So, we need to work on that. One of the other things that the city council has put on the agenda is updating our development code. So, that includes things for, particularly for zoning, but also for ways that development can happen. Make sure that the information is clear. There hasn't been a really major look at that for a lot of years. Make sure that it fits together, that you can all figure it out, what it means. It's easier for folks like you or the people that are working for the city to understand what it means. And that does take some work. It's like most things, you write some expectations for yourself and you revisit it ten years later, you probably need some changes. And that's the same thing in the city, for example, that some changes, some tweaks to make sure that it's working right. So, that will be part of my job. There is one new code that's going to be worked on more immediately. We hope with an end date by the end of this year. And that will be the tree code. The tree code will look at regulations about how trees can be managed, what protected, understanding that not all trees are going to stay forever, but maybe some of the assistance in place for how those preserve wildlife, recognizing that sometimes it's a risk that happens. So, that gives a few things and I hope that helps. The mayor has mentioned some of the big projects that we're involved in right now. The biggest one being currently being the hospital expansion. As he mentioned, it's about seventy-seven thousand square feet of expansion, new medical facilities, not counting parks and garage and things like that. And I think that's terrific. I think what it says is hospitals happen to be in Edmonds, they see a need and they want to fill in here. So, we're working with them on that. And then there are lots of other little projects, things as simple as the water heaters that need to be replaced, to new houses that are built or replaced or major additions. So, it's kind of the whole range of things that we try to work on and represent. So, with that, I pass it on.
You did good.
All right.
The next person to volunteer is Phil Williams, who is our Public Works Director. Phil.
I did bring a timer.
Give it to me.
Probably make some obnoxious noise when I get to six minutes. But yes, Phil Williams, I'm the Public Works and Utilities Director for the city. We are the, probably a lot of people wouldn't guess this, we're the biggest department in the city and we spend the most money. We spend almost, Scott, half the money the city spends every year and we have about eighty employees. But we do it really quietly, so most people don't know that. Except when we go to build a walkway on the waterfront or a round intersection, mostly what we do is pretty quiet and straightforward. And we are the builders and maintainers of the city's basic infrastructure. It includes everything in the right of way, the streets themselves, the signals, the striping, the markers, the sidewalks, the signage. All of that is maintained by the Public Works Department. Most of that with general governmental dollars, taxes that you pay, property taxes, sales taxes, excise taxes, utility taxes and so forth. And then the bulk of what we do comes from funds that are generated by our utility. So, taking care of the water system, those storage and distribution and pressure maintenance and fire flow, the sewer system, the drainage system or the stormwater system. Those are the city's utilities. And in my department, about ninety-two percent of the funds we spend come from utility. And we have, in the last few years, really upped the focus on replacing the city's aging utility infrastructure. With you paying your water bills every month, which is really a water, sewer and storm bill, thank you very much. We have had to raise rates, but that has generated additional cash flow for the utilities to go out and have a really active program to replace old, creaky, low-capacity, substandard water mains. And we are recently embarked on a similar venture in sewer system. We're going out, we've had two phases now of sewer replacements, both digging up and putting in new sewer lines and also relining some old sewer lines. Very expensive stuff. We've actually doubled our capital program in 2014 from what we spent in 2013. And that was a record year. And this year, we're doubling it. So, with the council's approval, the administration's initiative and with your support funding-wise, I think we're taking the right steps from an infrastructure perspective. I do want to mention a few projects, starting right here in the local area and maybe expanding to a few citywide. This temporary paving job that's been out here for the last number of months, in the next week or so, Santana, same contractor that put in the sewer line and part of the water line, will be mobilized back here to put the final street in place. That's under a contract with the city of Linwood, but we'll be watching it very closely as well to make sure that turns out to meet our expectations. The sidewalk that is there on the east side of the street, which was largely destroyed by the utility projects, will be replaced in Toto. Instead of just kind of spot repairs along the way. The city of Edmonds had to kick in some additional funds to do that. Not a lot, but just enough to get it done. We have the Perrinville Creek Flow Study going on right here. Where Perrinville Creek first daylights by the post office, heads down the hill. Anytime you have a heavy rain, which I'm sure the azars living at the bottom of the hill would attest to, this whole drainage basin has been built out. And so, even more now than ten years ago and much more than fifty years ago, when it rains, it all ends up going down Perrinville Creek much faster than it used to. It used to get absorbed into the ground much more than it does now. Now, it just hits the stream and starts eroding the channel all the way down, carries boulders and sand and gravel. Just ruins the habitat in the creek all the way to the bottom. We've got a study going on with Tetra Tech to try to identify ways that we could change that hydraulic profile in the stream. Hopefully infiltrate the water in other locations so we don't have such high-peak flows. So, that's two very close-by projects. I mentioned the Five Corners Roundabout, that is under construction. It is on schedule at the moment. It's weather-dependent always, but that will finish this year. I think you'll be very happy with the results of that, even though it was fairly controversial getting to this point. Next year will be a big year in the transportation area. We've got grant-funded projects to redo the intersection at Seventy-Sixth and Two-Twelfth, which if you drive through there frequently, you know how gummed up that can get, especially in the afternoon. We'll be putting all turn lanes in there, new signals. That'll be a great benefit. And then also, we'll be building out on Two-Twenty-Eighth and Highway Ninety-Nine. Huge project. The best thing about it, it's six million dollars and there's not a dime of city of Edmonds taxpayer money in it. It was all done with a federal grant that didn't require a match. Feel really good about that. And that will create a new east-west corridor between Edmonds across Highway Ninety-Nine and into Montlake Terrace, going right to the multimodal station. So, several large transportation projects that are underway now or soon will be. The utilities are coming along very well. And I'm happy to answer questions at the end too, if you have any about those projects or other issues that are particular to where you live. Thank you.
Good.
Oh, man, three seconds to spare.
He was practicing all afternoon. Our last director to speak this evening will be our new finance guy, Scott James. Scott comes to us from Muckelteal. In fact, Shane just came to us this week from Montlake Terrace. So, we're cherry-picking staff all around. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I too also want to thank you for coming. This is like a record audience for our finance director to speak in front of. When we go through the budget process, you know, I love seeing you coming and partake and actually helping your class. Well, my name is Scott James, as the mayor mentioned, and I am the finance director. I've been celebrating my second month anniversary here this week. While I'm still learning what Edmonds is all about, although I've been a long current resident of the city, but working at the city is more of a different than living here. As a finance director, I oversee a couple of departments. One's the accounting department, the other is the IP department. The IP, the finance department has a couple of big projects that we spit out every year. One is the annual financial report and the other one is the budget. So, the annual report, we just finished in early May and our auditors are on site. So, all these directors are probably having some choice words for me right now as the auditors are asking some really pointed questions about, why did you buy this? How did you spend this money? So, the auditors actually are our friends, we're your friends. They're actually making sure that the city is following policy, that we're spending our money. our money correctly. So I have approached working with some very good financial professionals in my department. They're responsible for doing all the lion's share of the work, and so as it was all of their hard work, they're actually getting good financial reports, and also we see clean audits, so I hope they're here to thank them for their hard efforts. The finance department is also, we pay their city's bills, so all the bills, the department and the, we also pay the employees. We also reach into your pockets. You're an op, you gotta collect your utility bill, collect your property tax that you pay also from the department, so thank you for all those dollars. Former President George W. Bush was quoted saying this about his budget. It's clearly a budget. It's got a lot of numbers in it. Well, yes, our budget's got a lot of numbers in it. You know, it's ninety-five-million-dollar budgets, it is a large budget, there's a lot of things that go in here. But it's more than numbers. The budget's basically our financial roadmap as well. It basically shows where the city's priorities are. As you heard, the police chief's got an eight-million-dollar budget. That is actually a priority that the mayor, the council, and elected to fund. We also have a fire contract, so those are priorities that get funded. You heard from the Public Works Director and Terry about some of the capital projects. Those actually, spent a lot of time trying to hold back old ideas and brands, so actually we can actually hold on to them, survive with those in the back. You heard from the Public Works and the parks. Both these departments require multi-year looks. As an example, you look at the street out front, as you heard Phil talk about it, this actually takes a lot of coordination. When they carry the streets off, and they'll look at the, see the sewer lines, the water lines, and the storm drains, and they'll try to actually leverage the repave and replace those all at once. It takes a lot of coordination, but also takes a lot of financial planning to make that happen. So one of the things that finance departments have been involved in is actually, we look at the funding option, we look at the bonds that were issued in the past, are we able to refinance them? And the city's actually been very aggressive about taking advantage of refunding the bonds that were issued at higher rates years ago. And those savings are actually savings that are passed on to you, because we don't have to charge as much as we pay the bonds in the future. The budget process is actually a multi-month process. It starts fairly early, it starts in May, and it culminates in November. During the process, it's, I get, the mayor, we get to be in the know a lot, as you heard, the police chief, he wants to talk about new staff, the mayor about various priorities about what you do at the city's parks. And all these things, after the form of proof, they, the partners put their requests into a decision packet, those decision packets have to outline why they want the money, how much is their item cost, how it's gonna be funded. And the mayor has the hard task, he has to look at all these priorities that are put before him, and he has to say, okay, this item is in, this one is out. Fortunately for him, his job was a little easier last year, as I understand, with the strong economy, guess what? All the directors are actually also conservatives, and I guess it's kind of there, too, but the decision package that they put in was funded. So when I was reviewing the Edmonds Business Journal this month, I was really happy to see a number that they were looking at, I guess, exactly. Unemployment for Snohomish County is four point nine percent. And I could see that strong employment number in the form of sales tax dollars that come into the city. And one of the things that I look at is, I look at those trends, how are autumn roll sales, how are our restaurants doing? And those things, we all look at them as a forecast, so that's how I'm able to give the mayor some confidence, say, yes, the economy is coming back, because here's the facts, here's the, here's those trend lines. A lot of the other departments I manage is the IT. The IT division is supposed to be the people we don't really hear, see, they keep our computers running, but the world that we live in, it's changing, constantly changing. And what we are going through, the budget, that's one of the things that was, that we didn't fund IT. So right now, we're putting together a strategic plan, how are we gonna take IT through where we're at today, and how are we gonna get us all stable, services up and going, for the staff? As you know, the city's a twenty-four-seven operationally, so it also requires some IT presence from time to time, it's also about hours, and so I like to hope that my staff are moving there and trying to, because our departments and others are always operational. One of the goals for the IT department is, as I mentioned earlier, there were some funding cuts early on, but one of the things we're putting together is a strategic plan, and this plan is gonna talk about our current state, where we're at, but we're also gonna create a pause, gonna help try and replace some equipment that's there. And we're also gonna put like a replacement schedule. And I like replacement schedules, because that way, when I go to put the budget together, I can show the mayor, okay, this is what we need for replacement, whether it's for life or for life. And so we also do the same for the vehicles. We have a replacement schedule that's very, it's very well-done, but it also helps so we know what the funding cycle is from year to year. Those things kind of help make my life a little easier. I overspeaked only like five minutes and should've done.
I'll never have to sound like you.
Yeah. So one of the things that the IT has to deal with, and we may not know this, we get routinely five thousand to ten thousand cyber attacks every day. And for these, to beat these cyber attacks and actually infiltrating our system and shutting this down, we have to really be really proactive in putting what's called security updates. So these security updates, sometimes are a couple or more per hour. And so this takes a lot of effort for the IT functions to keep those bad guys out. The IT, they're always working in the background. Some of the other things that finance is involved in is, I don't know how familiar, but the Business of Brupet, which, I represent the city on the board, that. And the Business of Brupet, which, they have a group of businesses down in the city, they decided to sign a petition to assess themselves a fee, an assessment. And this fee that they're using, they're actually going to build a, some money, so actually sort of vote themselves. What this means also is more business downtown, more sales tax for the city, it's a really, it's a win-win for the city. Another area that I also represent the city on is we have the public facilities. And that, that's right, they're responsible for the Edmonds Center for the Arts. I don't get a chance to go to that facility and partake in some of the programs that they put on. If not, I really recommend, they actually have one of the performances there. Another area that we're gonna look at is policies. I think from time to time, we have to look at the policies that we have in place, and look at how we budget things, do we budget for capital, are we actually accounted for, how we're gonna maintain into the future. We also wanna look at how we travel, are we losing a hundred dollars correctly, look at our purchase policies, and you see many adjustments as well. So, hey, that's all I have for public at this point, so. Thanks, thanks, thanks. And I'm also gonna be available for comprehensive questions, Mayor.
You know, perhaps sounds just a bit corny, but one of the real joys of this job is getting to go to the office every day and have about two-hundred-and-ten employees that are really committed to making Edmonds the quality that it is. And I think you just heard from the directors, who I just admire their work so much, they're efficient, I ask a question, we get answers, and they're also very good problem solvers. So if you'd be kind enough to give my directors a round of applause. So we have about two minutes left for you. No, actually, I hope to be done with this round by seven-thirty, so I came pretty darn close to it. I would like to introduce a council member that joined us during the last presentation, is our newest council member, Tom Osaros, has just joined us. The other person I heard from was Diane Buxtonus, who intended to be here tonight, but sent me a text Saturday saying she was too busy getting ready to leave the country, to go to Lithgow. She actually worked there for a number of years, and they had some sort of a big group reunion. So anyway, those are the council members that I have. So, we'll get?
Is the page coming back?
Pardon me?
Is the page coming back?
Yeah, we all hope so, that's for sure, yeah. So we'll open the floor for questions. If I am comfortable answering, I'll be glad to, but I'll also be very comfortable in handing it off to my staff. Yeah. Could you stand up, please, give us your name?
Mayor's Advisory Committee for Transportation under Mr. Hawkinson, and we worked on the comprehensive, we worked on the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, and I would like to ask you about two particular sidewalk projects in our neighborhood. The first one is on Eightieth Street, running from OVD, I mean Olympic View Drive, up to Eightieth Street. The importance of that was shown by Shane, your name, last name again, please? Ms. Hope's diagram, and it shows that that sidewalk connects three parks, South Snohomish County State Park and Seaview Park, and then it's a walkway for the elementary school kids to get to Seaview. Oh, and it also connects up to Seaview Park. And we were looking, we were rating potential sidewalks regarding connectivity and safety. And could you please let us know if that sidewalk project is in your scope of work?
I tell you what, I will have to get back to you on that, and look, I'm sure if it was in our plan, it's still in our plan. We put in grant applications each year, usually in the Safe Routes to Schools program, and we try to pick out the projects we think that'll score the best each year, and those criteria change a little bit from year to year. We did get three grants last year, and we're gonna start building the first of those projects this year on Fifteenth Street, between one oh four, starting in one oh four and headed south and east. That segment will be built this year, and then we have two more segments, Two Thirty-Eight, Two Thirty-Six. Those are places we got grants. We were lucky enough to get grants to build it. No match, hundred percent federal money. And, you know, anywhere where we see a project like the one you're talking about, that we can position for funding under that program, we certainly will be doing it. And I did want to comment, first of all, thanks for your service on the transportation today. I know that hasn't been active in the last year or two, but we are gonna re-energize that. And when we get, we do a transportation plan every five years. Last one we did was two thousand and nine. You do the math, that means we should be starting this year to do the next transportation plan. So we'll be looking for and trying to find citizen volunteers to serve on that advisory committee to help us put the next plan together. And I'd be happy to check on that particular project and its status, if you could maybe leave me your contact information. ...built in that area. I mean, honestly, I'm gonna tell you something you probably already know, I know you do, I would write a letter, write an email, address the mayor, the city council, and myself, call it to our attention in writing, and I'll even copy our transportation engineer, Bertrand House, who I think you know, and start it at that level. And my guess is, we've already identified that as a future location of a new sidewalk, but the same answer we just gave on, you know, for sidewalks, we just don't have money. Unless we can get a grant, we don't have any money in our budget to build new sidewalks. Well, right now, I'm saying, we don't. I think anything you could do to show significant momentum behind an idea like that, from a political standpoint, I would guess our council member who's in attendance, and the mayor, and myself, you know, it would get our attention, we'll certainly take a look at it and see where it might rank on, in our sidewalk plan. We have a non-motorized section of our transportation plan, and we have all of the areas in town inventoryed that don't have sidewalks. And if we had money, you know, we could take the highest-rated projects and begin to fund them. I'm just telling you right now, we really don't. The only place where we can get reliable funding is every once in a while, we get grants to build sidewalks in areas around our public schools, so the children have a safe route to get there. That's the highest priority for sidewalks.
You know, if I could just make a comment related to that, and you're the next questioner. We all think that cities have money. Yes, our general fund is forty-one million dollars this year. Our overall fund, I think you were wrong, I think it's ninety-seven million dollars, not ninety-five million dollars. But I mean, that's a lot of money, but we've got a lot of stuff to do. And you have to remember, with two thousand and eight up until about a year and a half ago, we were upside down nationally, statewide, in Snohomish County. We were upside down financially. So it's gonna take us time to regain our footing, to get back to doing projects that we probably would have liked to have done years ago. The simple fact is, we have a forty thousand population, we've got lots of roads, we've got lots of sidewalks, many of which need to be repaired, or as you've identified, we don't even have one, and it's gonna take some catch-up time. But nonetheless, we're trying to be attentive to as many things as we can, darling. Question?
I have an idea about when it costs all that much money, and that is Olympic View Drive, to go with the bicycle on the sidewalk, to make it a share, because there's no way you can make it wider. I looked at that and wanted, and looked at it, no, it's not gonna happen. And you see people driving really dangerously behind people that are using the street with the bicycle. So I thought if we could have signage there that shows, you know, pedestrian and bicycle shared, so that pedestrians also know, and you watch out for each other. It works in Europe, I know that. So I'm just, I'm just saying that would be wonderful, because you do, I checked with the police by the way, and they said it was good to use the sidewalk on Olympic View Drive, but I do get very much.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think what to say exactly. First of all, I appreciate the suggestion, and there's a lot of logic buried in there, but that is a five-foot-wide pedestrian facility. To go out and stripe it as a multi-use pathway, and say it's a multi-use pathway, and put the stencils down that say bicycles are okay, I know that as traffic engineers and designers, we'd be resoundly criticized for that, because that creates a different safety problem. I mean, it is true that if you have rapid cars moving on Olympic View Drive, trying to meld in with bicycles, and the lanes aren't that wide, there's some hazards involved in that. But there are significant hazards putting bicycles on a five-foot pathway with pedestrians, too. Some pretty serious accidents can take place there. I don't know what to tell you. I don't think that would really work, to use that as a multi-use pathway. You need at least eight feet under the manual of uniform traffic control devices that call it a multi-use pathway. You gotta have at least eight feet in width. I don't think we'll ever have that.
And it's not just a matter of putting up signs that shows that the okay, or you share, that's what I'm talking about.
What you can do is put those shero markings, you mentioned Europe, that's something that's really sweeping this country now, too, where you mark a lane, it may only be eleven feet wide, but you can mark it with a shero, which we did on Fifth Avenue, if you've seen those markings, and we've done it in other locations as well, which gives the motorist the clue that, hey, you need to be expecting to see bicycles right here, this is where they should be riding. This is where they should be riding, and they're going to be in your lane, and you have to share this space with them, without putting them on the sidewalk, but leaving them in the lane, but putting the appropriate markings on the road. I will look into that for you and see, see if that could be done.
And in the same way, who's responsible for cutting the shrubbery that extends over those, uh, vegetation?
Well, truthfully, the property owners that join the right-of-way, if they own vegetation that's growing into the right-of-way, are supposed to keep that trimmed. As you well know, that doesn't always happen. And we have the choice of sending them a, kind of a nasty letter saying, please trim that. And we usually send them another letter and say, please trim that. And then if they don't, we go and whack it, and then they complain that we're not artistic enough when we did that. I mean, we have a, we have a side mower that just kind of butchers it, and, and we do a lot of that. And then the next time, maybe they'll go out and trim it with something more elegant.
I was going to try it myself.
Have at it. It's fine with me. I, it's not.
Yes?
Okay. You've got signs on vehicles that say, Puget Sound starts here. How seriously can you take this? Now, I walk the beach almost every day when there's a tide and I pick up trash, but I, the scourge right now is not typically trash, it's golf balls, because the people take out each, um, trice, leave them to private driving range. Last week, I filled a five-gallon bucket full of golf balls. And I believe that somebody, either somebody up near Meadowdale Wharf who lives there and is doing this, or somebody went to the park above Meadowdale Wharf and took a shot. That's where I got the five gallons. And I went up there today, I filled half a backpack. Now, I understand that this is, this is only hearsay, a neighbor taught me something, but periodically we would see marine biologists down on the beach observing, and marine biologist saw this neighbor who also collects golf balls, and he said, that's weird you're doing that, because it seems eat them and it kills them. I don't know if this is true, but that's another reason that I'm picking up this mini golf ball that I see. I, I shouldn't have to go out with a backpack every day and pick up a hundred fifty golf balls every night. Now, what can we do about it? Are there any ordinances?
I'll be honest, I've been doing this for over thirty years. I, I haven't heard that one before, so.
It's not worse. And there's, Sam Ewing used to be one of the main offenders, of course, he's now gone, but the person who bought Claire's house is now.
I'll take enforcement.
The torts and issuing, I find, you know, we found hundreds of golf balls in front of his company.
Oh.
It depends on how long they've been, the length, which never ends.
Well, the only thing I can suggest, a specific like that, if you know an address, you know a name, get it to us, and we'll see what we can do about it.
No ordinances about this?
We don't have an anti-golf ball driving ordinance.
Well, but there, there are other people, other people I know, who actually have been putting their construction debris on the beach.
Well, that, that, obviously, that's, none of those things are okay. Some of them, the city has a direct role in enforcing certainly our own codes and our own expectations from a stormwater standpoint. That's where most of our focus, most of our resources go towards protecting the water quality in Puget Sound, but, from the streams and drainage ways that come through the city of Edmonds. And our treatment plant, obviously, we spend millions of dollars there every year to make sure we're doing everything to protect Puget Sound. That's more our focus.
I'll, I'll add one other thing. Last fall, I found two marine batteries on the beach.
Yes.
Right below.
Oh, yeah.
You remember this?
I think we came and picked them up.
Yes, yes, you did. Within a week, we had some guys walking half a mile up the track, and they picked them up.
They were heavy.
This was another one of these people that's beach rights, he has a boat, he's got his, his, his walkway down to the beach, and he just, he took his boat back from the winter and he took his batteries out, and he just left them on the beach.
I think I know who that was.
The neighborhood garbage dump. But thank you, thank you very much. I, I had a good feeling about your office after that happened.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Warren Anderson, and I live in one eight three three five, Eighth Avenue West, just north of Seaview Park. And I'd like to say to the park director that we really appreciate the very careful maintenance of Seaview Park. It always looks good, the trash is picked up, the equipment there is well-maintained, and it's an asset to the community. Now, in terms of requests, Eighty-first Avenue West, where we live, is exactly one-half block long. It, and it's paved, and there's, I think, five houses along there, including ours. And we've lived there since nineteen sixty-four, and after it was paved, the, the neighbor and myself have taken upon ourselves to clean the street. We've gotten old, and it's more difficult, and the street sweepers do not come down our little street. And so, the request that I have is to take a look at that and see if we can't get the street sweeper when they come on a hundred and forty, just to come down our little half-block street and help us with that. That would be very great.
Thank you, and I'll pass that on to our street sweeper.
Thank you for that compliment. I do have to say, for those of you who don't know, Rich Lindsay is our park maintenance manager, and he does a fabulous job. Kudos go to Rich and his crew. He is a forty-year employee of the city of Edmonds, and he gives his heart and soul to the park. So, when you see him out in the field or see the crew, you know, they don't get a lot of kudos, so if you, you know, see him, mention that to them, that would be really helpful.
Yes, sir.
I'm Brett Gaskin, I live in Meadowdale Beach, Maryland. So I guess, we'll start to sound here with a broken record on Meadowdale, but I was wondering, I probably ride my bike up there over a hundred times a year, so perhaps I'm a little more sensitive to its condition than most people. But I also ride around Talbot and notice that in the last year or so, they've done some selective patching of asphalt, where they cut out sections and then laid in new asphalt on top of that. And the problem I'm seeing on Meadowdale is that you have some sections that are so broken up that they're down into the substrate of the road, that I think we're going to end up with some pretty bad potholes there before too long. And this was just exacerbate, exacerbated this last winter, you know, with the screw-up that Loonwood had on Seventy-Six, because the sewer plant was planning on sending all those semis with, I guess, whatever they're pumping out of the sewage treatment plant. Instead of bringing that along Seventy-Six, they sent all those up Meadowdale Beach Road. So you had all these heavy, heavy semis going over what was already a pretty fragile road surface and breaking it down further. So I guess my, my question is, can you take a selective treatment to some of those really broken-up areas and cut them out and lay in some new asphalt in spots? Because, you know, a lot of the road, well, it's not in fantastic condition, is, is in passable condition. So doing that may prolong the life of the road enough to get, well, until city funding becomes available.
I, I agree with everything you said. I would, just a comment about Talbot, and I'm not sure exactly what area on Talbot you were talking about, but we, the last paving we really did there was in association with a utility project. We, we put the really. Okay, the storm project.
One Seventy-First, and then you all the way to right on, kind of, from the local point of Talbot, you go, you go westward up the hill, and you go down scripts, approximately where a, where a car's right tied.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was a utility trench.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not split, but we overlaid?
No. No, uh-uh. That was actually done with money from PSE. They put in new gas lines on One Seventy-First, and we doubled down our bet with them, and we took the money they had that would have taken to repair that. We threw in some of our own. That's the only way we got One Seventy-First paved, was using mostly their money. And on Talbot, that was a utility project. And frankly, when you don't have any money coming out of the general fund until this year, thank you. But prior to that, we didn't have any money for six years to pave streets. The only streets that were getting paved were someplace where we've torn up the street to put in a new utility. We would prevail upon the enterprise fund, the utility fund, to actually do the road repair. That's what happened on Talbot. But on Meadowdale Beach, I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. It's, it's terrible. And it's, you know, fixing, we will of course go out when it gets so bad that we've got a dangerous pothole, something that's going to be knocking rims off or causing damage or potentially even being a real serious hazard to a bicyclist. But to try to do some selective patching on the road, it's kind of, where do you start? Where do you stop? I think what we need to do is exactly what the mayor was outlining earlier, is find a spot in our schedule in the next, as soon as we can, and find the funding for it, and, and just hit the reset button on that road. It's so bad, it needs that.
Yeah, I guess I'd point out some other, we have to select patches right up here on, on here down, uh, down.
Yes?
On our, there's some.
We did some areas where the side of the road was just ravelling off and, and disappearing. That was not last summer, that was the summer before. I think we used our zipper and, and went down through there and tried to fix the worst spots. But Meadowdale's different. It isn't just crumbling on the sides and in the wheel tracks, it's delaminating completely from one side to the other. It's a real mess, no question.
And then, just following up on the charrows comments, you were talking about the charrows on Olympic View in the roadway, not on the sidewalk.
Absolutely, yes. If, if you're going to put charrows down, they would have to be in the roadway, yeah.
I also quit a request, I don't know if you can, so they do that way, that if you put it, if it's Edmond or Loonwood, that you put in a request, Loonwood, if they're in, if they're, since they widened it out here.
Mm-hmm.
They chose not to put in lightening, that clearly, you know, these, that will just be the wider, plenty of room for bikes and cars to have the charrows in there.
It's a good point, yeah.
Put the emphasis that the cars are closer.
I'll definitely mention that to them.
I've got, oh, I've got a whole bunch of ads. I've seen a gentleman with a short-sleeve shirt, kind of tannish. Nope, nope, tannish. Yep, you're on. There's you.
Somebody's got to say something about the elephant in the neighborhood. I like to be the one to bring up the whole Perrinville Woods issue and resurface the question about, or the recommendation, which has been before the city council, et cetera, et cetera, about what can we do to turn that four-point-six acres into a city park and expand our parks? Fully concur, the parks are great. I live up, kind of a crow's distance between Seaview Park, Seaview School, Sierra Park, they're all wonderful. It's a perfect place for another park, it's a great connection. I hate to think about what it would look like to come out here and once we, we pave Olympic View Drive and have to look to the left and see nothing but cement brick walls, no trees, and, might I say the terrible word, oh-so? I really fear, since we've had problem after problem after problem with drainage, that we're going to have another big storm winter. We could have stuff coming down from the hill, and who's going to pay the bill to clean the place up, redo the stream, get it back, you know? I'm talking Armageddon, I suppose, and all worst-case scenarios, et cetera. But if we could do something about a park, if I could win the lottery, you got it. It hasn't happened, unfortunately. But, and I'm sure a lot of other people in the room would say the same thing. If there was a way to get the funding, and we could help you out with it, I know there's interest in doing park stuff, and we really respect what's done with parks. We'd like to see one more.
Well, I, I think the answer that we give you probably won't be very satisfactory, because all I can tell you is, we are in executive session with discussion centering on that piece of property, and that's all I can tell you about it. Sorry. Yes? I'm sorry, I have to change here. I'd like to go. You know, all that stuff goes to his head. I'm not sure. Yes?
I wanted to say, I've been asked since nineteen seventy-five.
Stand up, please, so we can hear you.
Yeah, and I, I have the privilege of working with the city, I don't work for the city, and, and I just want to say that I think that nothing gets done without the heavy lifting that's happening with all the staff. And I've seen a lot of staff turnovers and people walking out of their jobs, and you're hiring good people. We need, we need good people and we need them to stay. We need to treat the city employees well, because they're only as strong as that good employee base. So I'm hoping that there is good funding and solid support to keep these hard workers there. I've seen nothing but some good results come. Carrie Height does an incredible job. Jim Stevenson facilities, you know, is this glue that holds a lot of the buildings together. So, you know, I want to support having good staff and good employees that are working for us, so.
I really appreciate that comment. Because as I said just a few minutes ago, the pride that I have in the folks that work for us, if you folks could see it on a day-to-day basis, how much gets done, whether it's the person that's digging in the flower bed, or whether it's the person that's paving the street, or whether it's the person that's balancing the budget, we have terrific people. And one of the real challenges we have is making sure that all of our employees are treated well, fairly, but treated well. And it's, it's an issue that I think very seriously, and, you know, right now, we've got at least one union we're in negotiation with. But it's really a goal of mine to keep people, and I'm hopeful that we can do a better job than hanging on to folks. Yes, sir.
My name's John, are you looking to comment on the, on the speed speeding, moving into Top Foods?
Moving into what?
Or Top Food, that now, that we do well, or.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Top Food, Top Food.
Oh, Top. I know nothing of that. No. Top Foods, of course, is a concern to all of us, as you know, with the closure of the store in Arlington and then in Edmonds, Top Foods is no longer in Snohomish County. There's been some sort of corporate decision made. I understand that there are some other potential users of that property, but I can't give you any information because I haven't had anyone walk in my door and say, I want to talk to you about, but I, I understand that there are other folks looking at that property. But as far as I know, Swedish is not interested in that.
There was something clear to the fire, there was a crack, and then you were, it's over the Pan area, and I thought people would come to Swedish.
No. I mean, I, I know the CEO there pretty well, and we've had no conversations about them trying to utilize Top Foods. Larry?
I'm Larry Ewell, I live on that median in one eighty, which is up the middle of the way. A thank you, a request, and a question. Thank you to the police department for doing some speed enforcement on Olympic View. I walk that often, and a lot of people follow along there, other people have mentioned Olympic View, and so, whenever I see one of the officers out there with their radar gun at one end or the other, really appreciate, I really also appreciate when you put out the speed sign that tells people how fast they're going, so thank you for that. I'm really intrigued by how often the word sidewalk has come up tonight, and I think it was maybe four of the first five questions or something. So the request that I have of the Public Works Department is, I would like to see them actually request money for a sidewalk somewhere in the city. I know it's, sidewalks are expensive, but I heard that from some other departments putting in requests for funding to catch up from some cuts that were made in the past. The resource officer at the school, as mentioned, I've had three kids go through the Edmonds School District, I know, I've got some experience with the school district, I know how important resource officers are. But I would just say to the Public Works Department, if you're not requesting money for sidewalks, then there's never going to be money in the budget for sidewalks. And so this is also for the council member. I would just like to see you try to get some money in the budget. some money in the budget, uh, for sidewalks. Uh, and then my question is, um, there's been a lot of talk tonight about, um, the recession and the budget cuts that the city had to take. Um, the economy's recovering a little bit, we're getting a little bit more tax revenue, but I'm also curious, um, and I don't know if you can answer this tonight, but has the city learned things from having to cut back? And has the city sort of, um, learned some lessons to operate, uh, more efficiently, to operate more smartly, so that we're not just adding staff back and adding programs back as we get more money, but, um, as we get more tax revenue, um, we were able to implement some learnings from when we had to operate in a more lean fashion?
Larry, I, I think we have learned quite a bit, and, um, if anyone knows me very well, I'm pretty tight. Uh, and, uh, for instance, just using this last year, before we would hire any staff, we had to look at any capital projects that were needed, a couple of HVA systems around the city and those kinds of things. We scrutinized that list before we even considered adding a few more staff members. I'm not sure the exact number that we hired initially in the budget, but it was probably around four, maybe five, but as we found out, and this is part of your lessons learned, we cut back so far that I did a couple of times have one of my directors come and say, "You know, when we cut, I agreed to reduce this position," so that person's gone, "but guess what now? With my staff of five people, they're now picking up bits and pieces of that other load." And the lesson learned there was, you can cut down to the bone, and it really begins to affect and impact the entire workforce in that area. So, we're, I'm really cautious on how many people we're gonna add, um, and how we can, you know, I have to say that the staff, time after time, has figured out ways that we can economize without adding staff members. So, we try and scrub it pretty hard before I agree to say, "Okay, we'll put that in the budget." Yep? Yes, sir?
I can't hear you. You're gonna have to speak up.
The cost-benefit analysis for these, uh, development projects, like, I understand there might be houses built in the Perrinville Forest, and multifamily home out downtown, and, you know, the services that you expect to provide, this is like a family community mostly, I would expect. Edmonds has a good identity, so when these people have kids bringing in and so on and so forth, like, what is the cost of providing those families the services they need to educate the kids and live in Edmonds happily versus what the state will get back, and the city will get back in revenue, and, uh, versus, like, with all the projects that we hear that's actually happening? Why is that a good idea?
Well, again, I can't comment on that.
No, I get that, that's just overall, I get-
The downtown piece, you know, one of the principles that we're finding, uh, that works effectively is how can we have walkable neighborhoods? I mean, it's a goal of mine to have walkable neighborhoods, whether it's a rescue, or bike owners, or downtown, or ultimately, uh, here. But part of the, the need for that is to have some density, that coupled with the fact that we've got zoning laws that allows certain types of projects to take place in certain areas. Now, you know, part of the implication is, uh, for instance, that post office site we were talking about, the multifamily, uh, we're certainly not going to cheapen anything with those going to be built, but it's gonna be high-quality units, and whoever's attracted there, remember, there'll be a cross-section of the community from the younger families to older families. Uh, but, you know, if it's zoned correctly, uh, and it, and it adds to the walkable neighborhood, uh, it's probably a good investment for the community to be involved in, because right now is, for example, and it's not all money, but that piece of ground basically gives us variable insurance, as it says, for the amount. And if there's thirty or forty units built there, that will be an additional benefit for whoever lives there, for the community, and ultimately, it will increase the tax burden, which takes away more and more of the concern that I have longer-term for the city, because they don't have any industry. You have to figure out how we're going to sustain quality of life that all of you expect in this town, how we're going to, how we're going to extend that, because the long-term projections, run by three different finance directors, you know, shows us that in the out-years, we could be pretty thin financially. So, we've gotta find comfortable ways to maintain work.
Well, when the neighborhood, uh, you know, so, we're just in, uh, like, a, a office building, and it's now, you know, the, uh, the, uh, the bowling, we've got a bunch of buildings, uh, they're pretty much, and they had to install their engineering sites, sort of, uh, green factories, but they don't have, uh, space for engineers, so they had to run around, and now looking for buildings to lease, because you're only the highest number, water and sewage, and not anything else, and you get all the benefits of, of revenue, that's the additional kind of-
Well, remember, the end goal is not just to have it, it's, it's to mention, it's all of the things that I mentioned, what I just said.
Right.
If the build, if the developer there came to us with a building proposal, office building proposal, they would be saying, they would receive the same sort of review as somebody's bringing in some multifamily unit. If it qualifies, if it's zoned, that's what the developer wants to build, and move the project to the zoning requirements we have, that's what we go there, use choosing to look at for multifamily. Shane, am I missing anything here?
No, I, I think that's correct. The thing I would add to that, um, is that actually, most studies show that mixed-use development, where you have a combination of residential and commercial, is actually the highest, um, property value. Uh, so it's actually more than, you, you could take a Walmart or a Big Box store, they do not make, do not end up with as much value for that property as a mixed-use project. Now, having said that, as the mayor said, we're not trying to just decide, well, what's gonna make the most value? That's, I, I'm sure that's not how all the decisions were made, but from a cost-benefit perspective, that's something to keep in mind. The other part, as I think the mayor was saying, is that, um, there, there's a need for all kinds of housing. Single-family housing, multifamily housing, smaller housing, big housing, there's a need for all kinds, because we're a community of all kinds of people and, and income levels and things like that. So, how to find a way to balance that, that's, I think, where we are. The bulk of this community is single-family housing, but there probably is still some opportunities for some other types of housing as well.
With my adding all the special housing, you know, the, uh, pool, I don't know if you're, you take the size of it, it's not really, it's, 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 uh, for-
Uh, sir, let's get any, Barbie, you have one? Let's go here.
I'm, I'm Duane Farman, and I'm interested in knowing when the two thousand twelve stormwater codes are gonna be adopted, because they would be-
What, I'm sorry?
The two thousand twelve stormwater codes? Could they be very effective if this turns into a PRD up here in managing the stormwater inflow Perrinville direction?
Well, both the public works director and I have had some conversations about that. Um, it's not as simple as just saying, "Okay, we're gonna change the number on the, on the zoning or other type of development codes," and say, "Okay, now we've got the twenty-twelve instead of the two thousand five," because each manual has a lot of other things that have to be changed at the same time. But this is something we're working on, and we think over the next year or two years, um, we will be able to get there. What we wanted to do first was to update some of our brochures and handouts and things like that, and encourage people to do the right thing, to, to use good rain gardens, to take care of their stormwater, and try to educate and inform people while we move towards that process. And we're trying to cooperate with the State Department of Ecology, which has a twenty sixteen deadline for that kind of thing. Either the stormwater manual used by Ecology, or one of those other ones used by, say, King County or Stonewash County. So, we're definitely working on that.
Do you have a, do you have a, do you have a-
Yeah, tw, we have to adopt that or the equivalent in twenty sixteen.
There are a number of opportunities to change the way we manage stormwater in the Perrinville Basin, as you point out. Uh, I don't think it's limited to the use of that one particular property. Uh, the park itself, Seaview would be a great place to do some infiltration as well, we're looking at that. As I mentioned, we have that flow control study ongoing, and one of the focuses of that is to find other places to put stormwater besides just dumping it straight into the creek. And Shane's right, we have to adopt the twenty twelve regulations by the end of twenty sixteen. It'll probably take, take us most of that time to really do a good job of working that into our existing code. Uh, it isn't just on the treatment side that those codes apply, it's on lot sizes and tree coverage, and, I mean, everything in the development code has to recognize an entirely different, new focus on how you build. Uh, it's a very extensive rewrite of how we do that, but it's coming.
Yes?
Well, uh, without commenting specifically on that development project, I would say that any new development project, whether it's located in the Perrinville Forest or some other entirely different place in Edmonds, has to manage its own stormwater on its own property, period. It can't let, uh, uh, peak storms run off a new development and into the creek. They, they have to manage their own. I think you were talking about something slightly different. Could they do more than that? Could they not only manage their own, but a lot of other stormwater in the vicinity on that one piece of property? I don't think that particular property is that ideal for it, but I think we have places in the area of where it can be done. In fact, we're gonna do two, uh, right-of-way-based rain garden demonstration projects in the Perrinville Basin as part of that study. We're working on the exact locations right now. We've talked to a number of property owners who, whose property out front of that would be where the rain garden is, where they probably park cars once in a while, so we wanna make sure we're putting them in places where people don't get really angry about it, but they will be in the public right-of-way. And of course, we're also encouraging everybody in town and, and trying to find some ways to incentivize them too, to put private rain gardens on private property to do the same thing. The key thing is the peak flow. I mean, um, when you say seventy percent of the flow, you have to talk in a lot more detail as to what that actually means. Is that seventy percent of the annual runoff from the property? Uh, I mean, the key is trying to control probably the two-year storm, uh, and, and keep that peak flow from exceeding what the peak flow was before you developed the property. So, it could be a green site now, and the amount of runoff that you'd have in a two-year storm from a treed site has to equal the amount of runoff you'd have after you put in all the houses. So, there's a whole bunch of techniques on how to do that, and that's the standard now, and has been for a while.
We're starting to get up against the rotary dismissal time. We'll take, uh, one more question. One more. Okay? Okay, sure.
Hi, my name's Jessica, and I live on, and, um, my question might be a little dated, but the reason why I'm here tonight is I was concerned about marijuana being sold in this Perrinville business area, and is it still a possibility?
The council has made a decision on, and we're allocated two outlets.
Correct.
State did this process, and the council has decided that both of those locations should be designated on Highway ninety-nine.
Here for the council.
If you happen to agree with that, yes. Anyway, hey, thanks so much for coming. This has been a great success. I'm sure it's harder than you feel, and I hope you feel the same way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.